So, Mayor, I'll go to the motion. Pursuant to Phoenix Code, City Codes, Section 2-219, I hereby move that the following terms and conditions of employment be imposed by the City Council. The terms and conditions of the 2012-2014 MOU as modified by tentative agreements 1 through 11 as signed by the parties. Eliminate all pension spiking provisions from the 2012-2014 MOU between plea, Unit 4, and the city, and include the value of the savings as a credit toward concessions. Continue the current 1.6 economic concessions as set forth in 2012-2014 memorandum of understanding between plea, Unit 4, and the city. Additional economic concessions of 1.6% in fiscal year 2014-2015 and .9% in fiscal year 2015-2016 as proposed by city management today. If, on, or before May 20th, 2014, plea ratifies the terms and conditions of employment as imposed by the council today, the city manager is authorized to enter into an MOU with plea for fiscal years 2014-15 and 2015-16 that is in accordance with the terms and conditions imposed by the council. This is the same as the other employees, but with the emphasis that we expect you to start hiring officers as soon as possible.
I think that's the motion on the table. I will second that motion. Councilwoman Gago.
Mayor, I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Go ahead.
I've been thinking about this and saying, what amount of compensation could we offer that would make me feel good about talking to someone who just lost their family or their spouse in an accident? And the answer I come up with is there is no amount that would make me feel good about it. We cannot afford to pay people what would make that right. It's a very difficult time, and so we have to think about what is the responsible thing to pay. But I understand there's differences of opinion here, and I want to give my colleagues who feel differently the opportunity to vote in favor of this. I think we've all made commitments related to pension spiking, but people have also made commitments not to change compensation, lower compensation for police officers. So I will give them the opportunity to move forward on that. My motion is that we restore concessions of 1.6% in the first year, a 2% wage increase as recommended by the Fact Finder, continue merit and productivity enhancement pay, deferred comp at .37%, the uniform allowance would stay at 1,150 and be eligible for pension. Vacation and sick pay would be pension-eligible. We would only address pension spiking for employees hired after July 1st of 2014, and we would impose all tentative agreements agreed by the city and plea.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. And I think the intent of the second is what was offered by Phoenix Law and Forest Association in the fact-finding process. All right, we'll take testimony.
A friendly motion, too, if I could. I'll support that. And that does go against some of my principles, so I just want you to know that, because I know what you're doing. And I'll make sure that we, I'm going to see if we get the votes across to do that. So if you could also, we make the cuts, look at the first $16 million that we've already identified in cuts, the travel budget, the lobbying, the PR budget. We look at those 104 vacant positions and the sale of vacant lands. They might get what they want out of this thing today.
I think we owe the public, the people who have stuck us, stuck through this meeting, a clean vote on the proposal, so I don't accept the friendly amendment.
Let's make it happen.
All right, so, and I guess I would request that we have comments on both the substitute motion as well as the underlying motion, depending on how it goes. This is your opportunity to do so. Comments by members of this council, Vice Mayor?
Can we get that written down? That, I mean, all right, I'll tell you, you guys are laughing, and you're absolutely right to laugh. And I may be supportive, so that may be a good thing as far as you're concerned, but I am sort of amused by the fact that we're sort of throwing out contract language without it being written down for us to even see it.
It's the Fact Finder stuff, right?
You have the Fact Finder's report. So as written in the plea final position on page four of the Unit 4 plea packet.
Let's make it happen.
Okay, so we have comments by members of this council. Councilman Nowakowski?
I have some comments. A lot of people have been hearing negotiation, fact-finding, "Favor Nation," "Me Too" clause. For those individuals watching television, not understanding what's going on, can you explain to people what impasse means?
That's for the city manager?
Uh-huh, or whoever.
Please, city manager.
I'll ask our Labor Relations Administrator Cindy Bezery to give you the answer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Nowakowski. As it relates to our meet-and-confer ordinance, impasse is reached when the parties cannot agree on any final resolutions or any final tentative agreements. At that point, both parties then file a letter with, excuse me, the Phoenix Employee Relations Board that we've reached impasse, and it eventually goes mediation and then to a Fact Finder.
And then, can you explain the Fact Finder?
Fact Finder is a third-party independent arbitrator who is selected from the Federal Mediation and Conciliation Service Board to listen to the impasse issues between the parties and any other information that they should choose to present to reach a recommendation for the city manager, mayor, and council.
And can you explain the "Favor Nation" or the term "Me Too" clause?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Nowakowski. It has been a consistent practice here in the city of Phoenix that all employee groups would have the same economic package, either plus or minus, often called "Favor Nation," equitable treatment, or "Me Too."
Now, we have five different unions or units. Have all five been through impasse?
Yes, sir.
Have all five been a part of the fact-finding?
Yes, sir.
And have all five been favorable or non-favorable to the Fact Finder?
We had different decisions among the units. Some were, the majority of the decisions were with the city. The difference, in my opinion, after reading the Fact Finder's point here in the plea, was that the Fact Finder recommended an increase in revenue to offset and to wait for the collection of that increase in revenue, and that's why he pushed the increases to the second year of the agreement.
Yeah. And basically, when that, it's been said many times, "Respect the process." That would be the fact-finding process, probably, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I was going to ask to actually send it back to our city manager and our negotiation team to really sit down with plea and work it out, because basically, we're not experts here. You all are the experts. The union leaders are the experts. But seeing that there's this second, very motion, it looks like I would probably go with the secondary.
Good job. Looks like we got the votes.
Okay, so we now have, we have the motion, we have a substitute motion comments, additional comments on that. So for the record, I'll be not supporting the substitute motion. I will be supporting Councilwoman Williams' motion. I do, there's been obviously a lot of hours and hours of testimony, very powerful and passionate testimony. These are incredible times that we live in. Throughout my 12 years of service in, on the city council, and now as mayor, I have been a rock-solid supporter of the meet-and-confer process, the labor negotiation process. I have seen that, especially over the last few years, come under incredible attack with the suggestion that our city manager is somehow in cahoots with our labor groups and that it ends up being unfair to the people of this, of this city. I really believe that our meet-and-confer, I think it's an unfair characterization. I really believe that our meet-and-confer process is the right process for the city of Phoenix. I have seen, in my time, both on council and as mayor, when they did a market adjustment in 2008, I certainly was supportive of that. I have, by members of this council, that has come under incredible scrutiny with the suggestion that has led to significant economic issues of the city today. It was the right decision to do at that time. It, a strong case was made. In 2012, I was supportive of this contract with Phoenix Law Enforcement Association. I mean, I can't, I don't think it's an unfair characterization to say that if you come to our meetings regularly, I, as mayor, come under every meeting, attacked by members of this council suggesting that. I have been inappropriately working with the labor unions to give pay increases that we didn't, that we kept in place longevity awards. I think it's not a mischaracterization to say that I personally have come under just significant criticism by members of this council regarding the decision to support plea and the decisions that were made at the bargaining table just two years ago. And so, like Councilwoman Williams, I'm proud of my track record of partnership and support for labor in the city of Phoenix, our city employees, including and especially members of law enforcement. So I don't believe that the labor management relations are sham or some of the other arguments that were made here today. It's tough times. We've got some tough decisions to make as a, as a city, but I don't believe that the system, our meet-and-confer system is a broken or a system that needs to be fixed. Because the alternative is then to just eliminate the city manager from the process and directly negotiate with the mayor and council. I don't think that would be a process that any of our employer organizations would appreciate if we were to change, change the direction in that regard. Throughout this process, we, the things, the recommendation has changed. There now is a recommendation for revenue on the table. It's going to be a very tough decision by members of this, of this council about whether to increase the, I'm sure it's going to come under significant criticism by members of this council and the public about whether that is the right decision to do, but it's what's going to be necessary in order to close our budget gap. The reality is that, for mostly, the labor management process has worked very well in the city. Certainly in the 2000s, it worked better when we had more revenue and we were able to decide how to spend that additional revenue. But that's simply not the case anymore. Revenue growth isn't as strong as we would like it to be. We are still feeling the effects of the recession. Increases in certain types of expenses, including employee expenses, are outpacing revenue growth. We talk about the cost, employee cost. We're not just talking about base wages alone. Of course, we have to include the cost of healthcare. Of course, we have to include the cost of retirement security that every single, actually the majority of this council, I think, believes in, retirement security for our city employees. As was mentioned, those pension costs have doubled over the last six years. It's not an easy statistic, but it's statistics that we have to come to terms with, and we have to continue to support, because we do want to continue to support retirement security for our law enforcement officials. This is the same issues that cities across the country are dealing with. Some have chosen the layoff route. That's not the approach that the city of Phoenix has, has taken. This is a great city. We have great city employees. We have great public safety officials. There's a reason why 93% of the people who live in our city say that it is still a great place to live. We all have to balance our budget. The city council has an obligation to balance our budget, and unfortunately, we are in a situation where we have to make tough choices to do so. I just want to say something about this equitable treatment, most favored nation clause, because it's come under a lot of discussion about whether we ought to go in a different direction than that for purposes of this round of labor management negotiations. I respectfully disagree with the approach that we should not abide by an equitable treatment with regard to our employee organizations. The reality is, is that when the city manager negotiates with our employee organizations, as a practical matter, we wouldn't get any agreement from organizations without an equitable treatment provision. And then we can decide as a council, as the other agreements come in, whether or not we want to change them. But otherwise, we simply wouldn't get agreement, and that's, it's been a 40-year tradition of the city in this important labor management process that we, that we go through every single year. So changing that and going in a different direction now, regardless of what's happened with, in the past, relative to the Fact Finders, we've always adopted, this council has always adopted, an equitable treatment policy by this, by this council. So times where it hasn't gone in one direction, we haven't punished anyone for that. Instead, our, our policy has been equitable treatment. And I do believe that that is the appropriate policy here, here tonight. So I cannot support going in a different direction, though I do think the motion made by Councilwoman Williams, under, for all these reasons, is the appropriate, is the appropriate decision here tonight. And so that's why I'm going to indicate I'll be voting no on the substitute and yes on Councilwoman Williams' motion. Vice Mayor?
I have a couple specific questions. So this proposal is, is not a cut for police? Yes or no?
No, it's add.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, which proposal are you saying is this one?
The substitute motion.
The substitute motion, as I understand it, would be a 0% cut to police the first year and a 3.6 total increase in the second year, which was the Fact Finder's recommendation.
Thank you for that. So the other contracts have been voted on. We've talked about this before. What do we expect? I mean, are they signed? They just got voted on a couple hours ago, in some cases, last week and the other. So what happens then? Because of the equitable treatment, we can expect that this isn't the end of the story?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'll ask the city attorney to talk about that contract piece.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, what would happen then if the substitute motion should prevail and be adopted by council? At that point in time, the various units that have already reached an agreement, we would have to amend those agreements, and those would be presented back to this body for review and approval.
Okay? So this would change your budget picture, correct?
Jim, may I add something there? They can ask for reconsideration as of today. You got till tomorrow on all of them. To change that most favored nation or poison pill, you can do that today, actually by tomorrow morning.
That prospect is a process.
No, please, if ever had a chance to testify, it should be noted, I think in addition to the wage issues, I do think the hearing option indicate that, this term pension spiking, that pension spiking would continue for existing employees, it would be, changes would only go in effect for new employees.
Mayor, that is correct. The other, the other part of the Fact Finder finding was that pension spiking provisions would apply only to officers hired after July 1st, July 1st or after of this year. I apologize, Vice Mayor, your question to me was what?
Well, I'm wondering what's going to happen with the budget.
With the budget, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, so there's $16.5 million of employee concessions assumed in the budget.
And this is 4.6 million of that, correct?
This is 4.6. The other aspects would be the remaining 11.9 million. So those numbers would need to be, we would go to attachments A and B, or I'm sorry, B and C in the manager's proposed budget, which was the list of services that we would come back to propose to the council.
Well, I took issue, I think the difference, Councilwoman DeCiccio and myself and other members of this council, we're actually willing to cut stuff that we think isn't as important as these folks who testified here tonight. And I think we've identified some of it for sure. I would say it gets you almost all the way to the 4.6 million. So I would hope that you would start there, and we don't go back to the senior center scare tax and so forth. However, I am going to engage in some controversy, because I would also say that what these folks do is more important than perhaps some reduced hours for some city services. So whatever you need to do to make the numbers work, I would certainly appreciate, and I think we'd all probably appreciate seeing those numbers as soon as possible, particularly you and I, since we're doing a budget hearing in my district on May 13th. You know, realistically, I've heard a lot of things about how we've always done things here at the city of Phoenix. If I wanted to do things the way they've always been done, I wouldn't have run for the office, just to be on automatic pilot. So this is uncharted territory. I understand, I've heard that a lot the last couple weeks. I feel like I'm on the Star Trek Enterprise or something, going off and seeing some undiscovered country with this, all this talk about, "We've never done this before." Well, we're going to see how this works. I think people thought that this was just going to pass tonight, and the previous proposal, and it's not. And you guys should be proud of your leadership, because I think, based on what I'm hearing up here, you're going to win. And I thought you deserved to win, based on what I heard in the presentation. I thought Will and Joe did a great job, and she should be proud of that. You know, that's...
We are.
I know we haven't always agreed. I'll let other council people speak for themselves about that, but realistically, I thought you made an excellent presentation of why you're different. I very inarticulately talked about this very subject about a month or so ago. So got myself in all kinds of hot water on Facebook and Google and all that stuff. But, but I let you guys handle that extremely well, and you deserve what I think you're going to get.
Mayor?
I think Councilman Gates had some questions or comments, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so I'm going to get a handle on these numbers. So the 4.6 million that we're talking about, that's based upon level in, the 4.6, tell me exactly what the 4.6 million is, covers?
Sorry.
Or what it assumes?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, the 4.6 million is the value of the assumed 1.6% reduction in the first year of that agreement.
Okay. So then, if that goes away, then obviously that's 4.6 million that goes away. Then the .9 in the second year is how, is worth how much?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, that number would be about $2.5 million.
Okay.
I'm speaking, I'm giving general fund numbers here.
And then the Fact Finder recommendation is 3.6% raised in the second year? What is it?
Yes.
Is that right?
Mayor, Councilman, 3.6 in the second year, restoration of 1.6 plus an additional 2% in wage.
And what's the value of that?
It's likely about $10 million, just, it's, it might be a little different, but in the $10 million range.
Okay. So we have the 4.6 million in 14-15, and then if this proposal were to pass, 12.5 million in 15-16?
Actually, $10 million in 15-16.
Okay. You said $10 million is the cost of the 3.6% increase?
Correct.
Right? And then there's the .9 that you're figuring into your budget is another .9 decrease in 15-16?
I apologize, that is correct. Yes, it's the $10 million plus the $2.5. You're right, I got you.
Okay, so it's just, I just want to understand the numbers we're dealing with. So it's 12.5 million in 15-16, 4.6 million in 14-15. And then if you were to, if, if those same numbers were to be applied to the other unions, what would the cost of that be?
So in the first year, if those numbers were applied to all unions, in the first year would be 16.5 million. And in the second year, it would be, I'm doing math in public here, 9 million, 9.3 million is the value of the nine tenths, and then 3.6 would be about 36 million. In other words, it would be about 45 million additional cost for all employees to the general fund in the second year.
Okay. And I, I need to get an assessment from staff. Do we believe that that's where these current agreements that had been agreed to by the council, by a majority of the council, that we would have the obligation to basically match that for the other unions based upon what, what exists in the agreements now that have been approved?
Mayor, Councilman Gates, it would be my understanding, I'll have the city attorney correct me if I'm wrong, that absent specific council action to the contrary, that yes, that would be the assumption for all other contracts to then conform to this language under the "Favor Nation," although the council could take specific action to the contrary, which has some risk to it.
That sums it up well. Can't do any better.
The, the substitute motion that's been presented includes, allows pension spiking to what extent? Pension spiking to continue to what extent?
It includes, uniform allowance would be pensionable, vacation and sick would be pensionable. And I should clarify, I intend to vote no on this motion. But I feel like it's important that we get out there and give people the opportunity to follow their commitments and to stay where they are, stay where they are on pension spiking, to stay where they are on these compensation.
You're going to vote no?
Yes.
You're gaming these officers here today? We had five votes lined up here with your vote.
I'm still voting yes.
I'm voting yes on this.
Excellent. Councilman Gates, go ahead.
Not going to game these guys, are we?
Those are my questions.
We had five votes lined up.
I'm sorry, I really thought you guys had won. I apologize.
Okay, if there's some comments by members of this council before we vote?
Is this a game?
Mayor?
Councilman Valenzuela?
Whoa. Yeah, thank you.
This doesn't happen here. This is how dysfunctional it is at City Hall right now. I got to tell you, this better not be occurring what I'm thinking is occurring here, if there's a game going. I say we just vote on this thing. Let's get it up or down. Let's do it.
Councilman can have the floor?
Councilman Waring, Vice Mayor, may I, may I have the floor, Vice Mayor?
Go ahead. Sorry.
Vice Mayor, may I have the floor?
Yeah, actually, actually, the, yeah, the mayor called on me.
Yes, go ahead.
So, so I appreciate it. So, you know, look, this is, this is a tough, this is a tough vote. It's a tough situation, and some of my colleagues on the council may even tell you by my vote tonight that I am not supportive of our police officers, but that could not be further from the truth. From the, from the very beginning, whether it's working on the cops grant or securing other public safety grants, it could be working closely with your leadership on, you know, whether, you know, union release time, for example, protecting pensions. It could be, you know, looking for, for opportunities for officers. You know, we have a crime safety initiative in District 5 that not only protects the neighborhoods with enhanced policing in a four-mile radius of Grand Canyon University, but, you know, frankly, there was a, there are a lot of overtime opportunities for officers as well. And, and the list goes...
Council, Council, go ahead.
So, now, I do agree with Councilwoman Williams that the safest thing we can do for not only our community but our officers is to find an opportunity to hire more police officers. And when it comes down to it, I believe that is a number one priority that we have here. In fact, in fact, that's something that I've worked and spoken with our plea leadership on, is ways to, you know, hire more police officers. This is a number one priority. I think that, I think everyone should agree, everyone will, will agree with that. So, you know, look, our employees deserve better, our residents deserve better. I never want to be in a situation like this again. I applaud our employees, all of our employees, for taking the cut. And I'm committed to figuring out a way that, again, to never find our way back here again. And I personally will begin by displaying that commitment by also matching the, the cut. I, myself, will be taking the 1.9% cut this year and the .6 next year to share in and sacrifice. But with that, I will not be supportive of the substitute motion. I am supportive of the original motion.
Mayor? All right. Thank you very much. Councilman Pastor, did you have something?
Yeah, I have several questions. And it's, I'm going back with Gates and the numbers. So 14-15, it'd be 4.6?
So I'm, I'm speaking all in general fund numbers here. So 14-15, the value of a zero to plea rather than a 1.6 is 4.6 million.
And then 12- And then twelve point five or thirteen fifteen sixteen?
Fifteen sixteen, okay, I'm sorry. Fifteen sixteen is twelve, yes, twelve point five in fifteen sixteen. Is the va- is the cost of the budget for that?
And if we, the favorite nation, then that will come into play?
Council, Mayor, Councilman Pastor, yes, the, the equitable treatment clause for the other unions would come into play with that motion.
Then, I think I have these numbers right, Gates, so you can help me with this, or the total, the total will be forty-five million?
So the total for fourteen fifteen, for all units to get zero, all employees to get zero, I'm sorry, is sixteen point five million, plus the second year, if all unit, all employees got the three point six percent, that value to the budget would be forty-five million. So a two-year total of about sixty million dollars.
Two years sixty million?
Two-year total.
And then, what is our projections in revenue?
Mayor, Councilman Pastor, are you speaking of the fifteen sixteen?
Well, fourteen fifteen.
Okay, so fourteen fifteen, sixteen point five million would mean that we would be going to reductions of services of sixteen point five million to balance the budget, the way it is assumed now.
Okay.
So in other words, if we, if we had zero cuts to city employees, that's equivalent of sixteen, that's sixteen point five million cost to the budget that's not accounted for now, that we would have to either raise in revenue, ex- additional revenue, or cut in service.
And then fifteen sixteen?
For fifteen sixteen, we are currently looking at, and again, this is really a far look, so it, it will change, but we're currently looking at a deficit in the fifteen to forty million dollar range if nothing else changes. So that would add, be additive, that sixty million would be additive to that range.
Okay. So I, I'm trying to figure this out as, I mean, I know pieces of it, and please bear with me. So attachment B and attachment C right here that's being proposed, these would be the ones that would be cut, fourteen fifteen?
Mayor, Councilman Pastor, yes, that is, then the manager's proposed budget, B and C are the list of items to cut to balance the budget, should there not be employee concessions of sixteen and a half million or new revenues of eleven million. That's what the, that's what the budget's based on, those two components.
And you're saying you're projecting new revenue of eleven?
In the, in the fourteen fifteen budget, it assumes a new revenue of eleven million dollars, yes.
So then if we get to fifteen sixteen, there can be additional cuts to services? And would that be forty-five million or sixty million?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, if, if the three point six were across the board for all employees, that's about sixty million dollars additive to what we currently estimate as a potential budget shortfall. So if the range before were fifteen to forty and you added sixty, the range would then go to seventy-five to one hundred.
So, okay. That's for fifteen sixteen?
For fifteen sixteen.
Then we would be basically gutting all our services? That's what I'm hearing.
Just by way of comparison, the proposed service cuts this year were about, almost thirty million dollars. So you would double that to get to sixty. So, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor, can we call the question?
No, well, I, whoa, wait, I have to have an opportunity to talk here, Mayor.
I believe everyone has had that opportunity.
No, I didn't. Not in this motion here. Promise is made, promise is kept. Making a motion is a promise, but it's also a point of order.
The question has been, the question has been called. Is there a second?
Point of order too. Robert Rules, does it, this is to the city attorney. Does the maker of a motion, can the maker of motion vote against their own motion?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, yes, they, they can vote as they, they choose.
All right, so we have a, we now have a call the question on the, on the floor. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
What, abstain? I didn't hear you there.
This is a call of the question, I mean, to end debate.
I'm gonna vote no on that.
Okay, let's do a roll call. This is, so this is on the call for the question.
And this is how dysfunctional, lack of leadership at the city council is. Now you just saw it, folks.
Roll call.
Explanation of my vote. What you saw here today was a lack of leadership, lack of direction. You know, Mayor, I have a right to talk, and you know...
No, no, the question's been called. We have a vote on that.
Cutting me down constantly.
Roll call. DeCecio?
No.
Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
No.
Noakowski?
No.
Pastor?
No.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Williams? Waring?
No.
Mayor Stanton? Yes, I think the call for the question fails on a five to four vote. Councilman DeCecio?
Thank you, Mayor. So, you saw how this was gonna be shut down and it didn't happen. What ends up happening, and I just wanna, and I'm gonna tell you, this is an incredibly frustrating experience, but welcome to the world of the city council, Mayor. Now you know why the city council, I mean, the city of Phoenix has one of the worst budget deficits ever and has the most amount of revenue. It's not a revenue problem. The city of Phoenix has over forty-six million dollars more this year than last year. And now you just saw the lack of leadership here and you saw the lack of focus. This is why we have a problem. It's not about needing more money for the food taxes, not, you could give us all the money in the world and you still have this. This is what the problem is. No one took the leadership position here to try to make it happen, except for maybe a couple of us to try to make this thing happen, one way or the other. But you saw a game occurring. And you know what was the worst part of this thing? When you make a motion, that, you're making a promise. You're making a second, you're making a promise. We're about to find out if these promises are broken and kept this quick, within a matter of minutes. That's what we're about to see here today. So here's what I would like to see done. I'd like to see us pass this motion, get it through, have direct city manager to go find those cuts. We've already identified sixteen million dollars in potential cuts. But you know what? We're gonna have to make a decision whether or not we give up our travel and fine dining on the council, or we're gonna support police officers. Gonna have to make a mo- decide whether or not this council and mayor is gonna work and get our rear ends down to the state capi- that's west, down to the state capital ourselves and be able to do the lobbying ourselves. That's what, that's what you hired us to do. So we're about to find out whether or not these promises are gonna be made and whether or not they're gonna be kept. And we're gonna find out pretty doggone quick here. What we do know, and I wanna reiterate this, is that the job functions of police officers are different. The responsibilities of a police officer is different. Their responsibility is dealing with police powers where they arrest individuals and they are involved in situations where it's always negative. Now, we're always involved in nice little dinners and things like that. They don't deal with that world. They don't deal in the same world that we do. Their work schedule is different, their training is different, their engagement with the public, as I said, is completely different. We owe it to them to treat them the way that they need to be treated here. They don't need to be gamed, they don't need to be treated poorly. And we're about to find out what's happening. I'm incredibly disappointed, but I'm not surprised. This dysfunction is the, one of the worst I've ever seen. One of the worst I've ever seen. And I'm gonna be voting yes on this. And, you know, on the pension spiking thing, we don't agree on that. That's gonna be handled in court anyway, so. We don't agree, but that's okay. We don't agree with pension spike. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Council, Vice Mayor, did you have additional comments?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate it. I have one small request going forward from this council. Please, I don't ever wanna hear another mayor or city councilman make fun of the state legislature again.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, we have no leg to stand on there. I've never seen anything like this, making a motion and then, particularly in a room full of people who obviously came down here very passionately. So again, I guess we'll see where the votes are. I think the idea was Councilman DeCecio and I didn't mean what we were saying and so forth, and it turned out, surprise, we actually were. So, I'm sorry that perhaps that's not the case with every person up here. So you're gonna find out in a few minutes who your friends are. Again, I'm not looking for thanks, I'm not looking for helping campaigns, I'm not looking for anything. This is, I think, is just better public policy than we were offering and certainly couldn't be worse than the budget scenarios we've, we've put out there the last, I guess now, three, three cycles for me on this. So, sorry if this is gonna work out that way. I'm sorry I declared victory and put up the mission accomplished sign before, I guess, it actually happened. But I, based on twelve years of history of doing this, I've never seen anything like this, so I made an assumption that I thought was ironclad. So we're gonna find out what happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Any additional comments by members of the council?
Mayor?
So, Councilman Noakowski, please.
I've been on the council for seven years. And this is sad. This is very, very sad. You know, I've been on the council for seven years, I've been to eight funerals, one firefighter, seven police officers. And it's sad that we're playing this political football with you all. What happened here is that there was a motion, and there was a secondary motion. What that does is it freezes everything. So that we couldn't make another motion to say, hey, take it back to the city manager, to our staff, to try to fix it and negotiate with the police union. That's where it should be fixed. It shouldn't be fixed here with us politicians. Let the experts fix this problem. Now you go back and they should go back and try to fix this. And that's where it has to happen. So I'm sorry, I apologize. It's a sad day. And Phoenix, I didn't think it was broken, but it is broken with what just happened right here.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilman, Councilman Gates, please.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. I would agree with some of the comments made by Councilman Noakowski. I think, you know, this shows to me clearly, this is actually proving why it was a good decision to vote for the continuance at the very beginning of this evening. There's more work that needs to be done. But I just, I, I can't support this particular substitute amendment that has potentially seventy fi- you know, could commit the city to over seventy-five million dollars that we don't have in the budget now over the next two years. I just can't vote for that, and it's not a responsible thing to do. And I also frankly can't vote for a motion that will have us go backwards on pension spiking, which is something that is very important in the community. And I also can't support this motion when the plea has agreed to take the three point two percent raise, which I thought was, was a great move on their part. They agreed to take that off the table for the second year. So it's just not responsible, in my opinion. I respect where everyone else is coming from up here, but it's just not responsible, in my opinion, to vote for this. Instead, I would go more the direction of what Councilman Noakowski has said, that we, we've got some more work to do. I proposed a little over four million in cuts that came off of the attachments B and C that Councilwoman Pastor were referring to earlier. But this number is just, it's just too big for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman Gates. By the way, if, just as you indicated, if you decide to vote no on both, that's perfectly fine. In fact, we've had incident not that long ago in which we've had both motions and substitute motions not be successful, and then we're back at the table, so that is not unheard of. And so that, I don't think it was an inappropriate motion to present these issues, get them on the table, let people vote, and they can certainly vote them down if they, if they want. That's an option that everyone has. All right. I'll now do a roll call vote. This is on, this is on the substitute motion. Roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Gallego? Gates?
No.
Noakowski?
No.
Pastor?
This is a really difficult decision for me. It's very emotional, too. Just knowing that more than sixty million in four- from fourteen sixteen, and that we're gonna gut all our programs, I'm voting no.
Valenzuela?
No.
Williams?
No.
Waring?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton? No, so the motion fails on a seven to two vote. Now we're at the original motion by Councilwoman Williams. Are there additional comments on the underlying motion? Councilman Noakowski, please.
Now that we had a secondary motion voted on, it's gone. Can we create another secondary motion on top of this?
Mayor, Councilman Noakowski, no, you cannot. Under the council rules, rule number five, a motion can only be amended once. And then the original, and if that fails, then the original motion must be voted on. So that's in the council rules already. So no, you may not.
As I indicated earlier, we've had situations, not that in the distant past, in which we've had motions, substitute motions, and both, both failed. So obviously, people can vote what they think is the right public policy of the city, and if it's unsuccessful, then we'll be back at another time. Any additional comments by members of this council on the underlying motion?
I do.
Councilman, Councilman DeCecio, please.
So, I wanna make sure I understand this clearly. The votes were there to give them a pay raise. Now everybody's gonna be getting a cut. So it's gonna be that much of a flip? Really? Is that really gonna happen here? Where it went from treating them fairly to now cutting, voting, okay. I'm gonna be a no vote on this one. It's, go ahead and vote. Okay.
Love this job, it's so exciting.
DeCecio?
No.
Man. Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
No.
Noakowski?
No.
Pastor?
Yes.
Valenzuela? Williams?
Yes.
Waring?
Absolutely not.
Mayor Stanton? Yes, so the motion passes on a five to four vote. There be no other, there be no other abyss for the council. We're going to adjourn the meeting.